Welcome everyone to the Boiling Point Podcast. I am your host JD and we are doing a very special and a little impromptu live watch along for the West Shore School District School Board Meeting. It's going to be starting in just a few minutes and then make sure you stay for after the meeting, we will be doing some post game analysis. You can see my brother Jayman in the corner there making a rare in the background appearance as some people sometimes he does. Mariana Reed will be joining me here in just a few minutes. The meeting will be getting started in about 10 minutes. During that time, we've met, we probably won't be talking very much. We may provide a little bit of commentary here and there, especially if something's happening. If Denise joins me for the actual meeting. Otherwise, we'll just be live streaming the meeting and then talking in the post game and we hope to have a couple of guests in the post game. So make sure you stay tuned for that. I'm going to use this opportunity to plug the storefront bonfire.com/store/theboilingpointpodcast. The brand new, I just received it the other day. First Amendment, it says we the people on the fronts. I can't turn around so that you can see the back, but it's got the full text of the first amendment on the back. It came out excellent. It looks great. I'm very happy with it. Bonfire always does good jobs when I, when I make a new design and this is no different. Very happy with it. So pick one up if you, if you would, if you want to support us, pick one up. It's a great design. It'll also show your support for the first amendment and boiling point podcast. And I'm going to bring Mariana in with me now. Mariana, you're muted.
I'll figure it out.
You got it.
Okay. So we're getting ready to see the board meeting?
Yes, the board meeting is next. Now the earlier today was the, was it was a policy meeting and we will be, I talked to Denise, we're going to be talking on Saturday to plan it out and where and schedule it on like when to do some dissection of that meeting. So look for that probably early next week, hopefully Monday. Is when I'd like to do it, but I haven't gotten a chance to even really speak to Denise beyond, hey, we should do this. So we sometime between Saturday and next Wednesday, we'll, we'll have it up then for you some little analysis on the policy meeting because that was.
That was a train wreck.
Oh, that's, it was a train wreck for sure. It was, yeah. Abigail Turney is okay with boys competing against in, in girls' sports, not just competing against them, but in girls' sports, that was.
And she wasn't, she were not defining what a woman is. Okay. And I'm sorry guys, I keep saying, um, parents, we need to topple her. We need to topple her because she doesn't care if she's putting out our daughters in danger or you know, to further the agenda. Okay. And we all know that, you know, having boys play against girls is dangerous. We saw it in the Olympics. How many, how many, you know, I mean, women athletes, we haven't seen hurt. And for her to sit there, you know, and then what really bothered me, or really bothered me was that she was trying to state. I don't know if you picked this up Jonathan, she was trying to state that the parents are not stakeholders. Okay. Meaning we have no say according to her as to the policies passed in the district and what they do or do not do with our children.
Yeah, I, I heard that too. Uh, that was, that was really crazy. And of course I don't know who it was. I need to get a name chart and a Facebook put together for the meeting. So I know who's talking, uh, but someone interrupted her and was like, uh, yeah, no, this is the, this is why my constituents elected me. So yeah, they do have a voice. I'm that voice.
That is correct. Um, Mandy was a champion. I mean, she stood her ground. Um, so the, um, Brenda Cox and Heidi Thomas. And they let her know, you know, the parents, you know, are the stakeholders and the parents do have a say. And this is why we were voted in. I mean, it was pathetic to see. And then we have our $200,000 a year, you know, administrator. Agreeing with, um, Abigail Turney. And I think the biggest mistake that they will do, if they will allow the administration to draw up this policy, it's going to be a train wreck.
Absolutely. It is. Yes. And in terms of women, uh, men competing in women's sports, episode 88 of the boiling point podcast, you should really check that out. Uh, we. It's a really great episode. It's one of my best episodes. It's definitely one of our best episodes. It's one of my favorite episodes. We have clear scientific data. That shows why men and women should not be competing against each other. Okay. And just to point, and we talk about it in depth in the episode, but just to let you know, uh, one thing, uh, the, a boys high school basketball team played and defeated the women's Olympic basketball team. It also happened in swimming. So you're talking about high school boys competing, like getting time faster times or competing at least with times as Olympic women athletes. There's no comparison. The scientific data doesn't lie. So check that out. Uh, that episode 88 go, we'll give that a watch. It's a great episode. And also if you go check out America's Tribune and look at the sports section, americastribune.com and look at the sports section. And, uh, fine. I have a three part written articles on that, which I'll be transferring over to my, uh, to our site as soon as we get it up. But I have a three part article there, uh, on various men competing against women in various sports. I apologize, my phone. This is a very impromptu episode. So we're throwing it together and I forgot to mute my phone. The meeting, I see we've been viewers, the meeting will be starting. Um, I don't know, we're not going to be talking a whole lot. We might be providing some commentary or I'm, I'm probably going to be quiet and Denise will be joining us shortly. So I'll probably let Mariana and Denise, uh, leave them unmuted while the video is up so that they can commentate or talk whatever they want to do during, during the meeting. Uh, and then after the meeting, we're going to do a little bit of post game analysis, depending on how much discussion we get to in the episode. We'll have a little bit of analysis at the end of the episode. And I will be muting my phone here in just a couple of moments as well. So yeah, and we will be providing a breakdown of the policy meeting that was earlier in the day. Uh, we did not, I could not live stream both that. Like I said, this was an impromptu thing that we threw together a couple of days ago. We talked about doing this. So I was not able to do dual live streams, but we are here for this and we will be live streaming the, uh, school board as soon as it gets going. They said about 6:30, the other one, uh, the policy meeting got started a little bit late. So I'm assuming that it won't be necessarily 6:30 right on the dot, maybe.
Sometimes it isn't. Sometimes it can be up to 10 minutes late. Um, it all depends on what's happening behind the closed doors and then sessions.
Yeah. Absolutely. Um, so make sure you check out, let me do some more plugging. Um, Mariana is officially, let me also do this, use this as an opportunity to, um, plug some stuff. Mariana Reed has officially joined the boiling point podcast team. So she's going to be our, basically our senior West Shore School District. Correspondent, she's going to be, um, helping me lead and spearhead all of our coverage with the West Shore School Districts. So that I can advance the cause and in, in the other ways that we want to grow the boiling point podcast. I'm only one person that can't do it all. So Mariana Reed's joining the team. Denise Dugan is also joining the team. She'll be joining us a little bit later. And, um, between these two, eventually we'll be getting their content on the boiling point podcast channels under our banners. But we're, we're not rushing it at the moment. We're, we're making sure we take our time because there's a lot going on and I'm spread very thin. I see we have a lot of new viewers tuning in. Thank you for tuning in right now. The school board meeting will be started, getting started very soon. We won't be doing a lot of, um, commentary necessarily during the meeting, but I will be letting Mariana and Denise, you know, leave their mics unmuted so that they can commentate or say something or point stuff out if they want. And then we'll be doing a little post game analysis after the, uh, the school board meeting is over. So, uh, stay tuned even before or after the meeting and remember we're, we're live streaming the meeting itself. So stay tuned to us and watch the meeting here. You don't have to go to the, their website tonight to watch it. Share this, share this stream out and tell your friends, your fellow parents to tune into this stream. Cause not only will you help us to boil like podcast, but then you get to stay tuned. You get a little, you get a little post game analysis after the meeting is over as well. Plus you'll get to hear, you'll likely get to hear Mariana and Denise.
Faint.
Talk at least a little bit during some aspects of the meeting. And yes, as I said, they joined the team, they'll be doing, um, Mariana will be doing, um, continuing her updates. Um, and maybe even doing her own show at some point. And of course she'll be continuing, um, whenever I do episodes, she'll be coming on. And Denise will be doing, um, some shows and, um, also some, um, constitution shows as well, some constitution, uh, various shows on the constitution, both Pennsylvania state constitution and the United States constitution. There'll be separate series. Uh, so we're developing that, look for that hopefully sometime in the first quarter of, of 2025 here. Uh, we're hoping maybe by late February or sometime in March is when we'd like to, to be able to get that series launched as well. So where things are going. We're growing good here. Check out our storefront bonfire.com/store/theboilingpointpodcast. Pick yourself up some of our apparel. We have a lot of new apparel that I just found out we have access to in the storefront. So stay tuned over the next two weeks because our storefront will be getting a lot of different apparel, not just t-shirts and stuff. There's going to be, uh, pants coming in now. Two different styles of pants, I believe, and, and a couple of other different items that we now have access to in the storefront. So we got a lot of new items, not just different designs of t-shirts and sweatshirts and stuff, but actual, uh, uh, different items in our storefront will be coming out in the next two weeks as well. Doesn't this look nice, Mariana?
I love it. And we were talking about it. Some of the girls, you know, we like it. I know I'm going to order Casey one because he's going to love it.
Yeah, it's, it's so, it came out so good. I'm so happy with it.
I still have the sweatshirt that I ordered from you a year or two ago, and it's still in perfect pristine condition. It looks like it just came out of the package.
Yeah.
I steal it from him all the time.
Blue one, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the blue one. Yeah. They, they looked good in the, the, the eagle or the, the design and stuff looks good on the, on the blue too. This is, I got this in the black. I have not seen it in any other colors yet. So if somebody else gets one in a different color, please send us a picture so that we can see you in it and see how it looks in other colors.
Yes.
And, uh, my brother just got, um, his camouflage sweatshirt. Maybe after he's, uh, finished what he's doing, I can talk him into putting it on quick and walking on camera with it for a shame, shame, shameless plug. If the meeting doesn't get started. But it's a camouflage one. It's, it's the, it's our, uh, second amendment design, but it's on our camouflage camouflage sweatshirts now. It's a separate, it's a separate, um, campaign on our, on our storefront. So look for it. It's the camouflage sweatshirts. Pick one of those up. My brother says it's very nice. He loves the feel of it. He says it's very warm. So go ahead and pick one up, support the show and of course share this out, please. Right now we're doing like a 15 minute commercial because we're just waiting for the meeting to go live. And you know, we just don't want dead air. So I'm plugging our storefront and our products and Mariana and everything else.
Yeah, it should be coming on. So usually when they, um, take this long to come on means that there's some, let's say disagreement in the background and you'll know that when you see the faces.
Yeah. I don't know if Denise is, um, when Denise is going to be joining us. Um, she'll hopefully be joining us very soon. Um, but I'm going to, like I said, um, I'm going to bring this, the, the feed up full screen. So you guys will be off screen, but you, you guys can still talk if you, if you guys want to talk. I'm going to leave your guys' mics unmuted. So if you guys at any point need to walk away or anything, you know, mute your, you know, feel free to mute your own mic, walk away, whatever you need to do. Uh, as I was telling people, you know, uh, I don't know how much talking anybody's going to do during the meeting and it could be a long meeting. So I don't know how many people are going to stick with us, but if you're going to watch the meeting, do it here. So share it out. Go ahead.
It might be a long meeting. I found out, although I wasn't present at the four thirty one, um, I was, I was seeing it, but I was informed that, um, the press was there.
Oh, really?
The press was there. They were escorted out and they came back in anyway. Now, um, they asked, um, they asked, um, Sandra for comments, Miss Sandra Gonzalez, and she made the mother of all comments. So let's see if they air it or they cut it.
We gotta get her, we gotta get her a shirt too. We gotta get her a shirt too. You guys need to start, you guys need to start showing up to the meetings in the boiling point podcast.
Hat, socks, yep, let them know.
Yeah. I mean, you get like, you get six or seven people there wearing the boiling point podcast shirt and you know, it's going to, it's going to be a statement.
Yes, most definitely. Most definitely.
And again, check out episode 88. It's our episode about, um, men dominating women's sports. Uh, that was a topic in the, um, in the policy meeting, which we're going to, uh, dissect later. Uh, Denise just joined us and the school board meeting has still not started. So we're going to get her in here to do a little commentary quick before the meeting started. Denise, welcome back to the podcast. I already announced to the, to our new followers that you and Mariana are the new team members of the boiling point podcast. So, and you'll be doing some constitutional series. So, uh, I told them to look for that, you know, sometime towards the, uh, end of February or, or sometime in March, so that we can, uh, we want to get a good about, a, a good amount of the series filmed first, before we start releasing it. That's one thing that I've learned from the Old Testament survey. Is that you really want to, when a series, it's not live, if you're not doing it live, you really want to record as many, you know, get as many recorded as you can before you start airing them, just because that saves you a lot of hassle later on.
Agreed. And I'm learning that as I'm navigating even as a newbie. So yeah, good practice. So thank you for welcoming us and you know, I'm looking forward to working all together. So.
I'm just going to bring it up so that way we can see it in case that way it, when it goes live, I, I can see it and, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, they do run late sometimes. Are you ready for part two Denise?
I, I told Mariana that I'm going to, that I, I'm going to, I'll bring it up full screen. Um, but I'm going to leave you guys in the studio and I'm going to leave your mics unmuted. So if you guys want to commentate the meeting or anything, this can be a legitimate watch along and you can actually, you know, talk or whatever while the meeting's going on. I am likely to keep my mouth closed unless I have a question or, or you guys need me for something. So unless you need me for something, I'm likely just going to be around.
Okay. Well, if you have a question, um, you know, and if one of us know, then we'll.
Well, I might talk, well, I might have too many. That's why I'm likely going to be quiet for the meeting and just let you guys handle this as like a legit live watch along. You guys are the professionals on this. So.
Well, you can observe and learn.
Yeah, don't be afraid.
Then you'll understand a little bit more how the process goes.
Yeah, that's.
It's a little bit.
Yeah. Um, so if you guys want to make sure, you know, if you guys want to break like, when something's happening, tell the viewers, hey, this is what they're talking about right now, or this is what's happening. Don't be afraid to identify who is talking in my opinion, like, oh, this person is talking and they're seated here. That person's talking now. They're seated there. You know, you don't, you know, feel free to fully commentate it, you know, for the, for anybody that's watching along. Hopefully we're getting, we're going to get a lot of parents here to tune in once the meeting starts.
That would be amazing.
Please pause.
Oh.
Please pause for the national anthem.
Okay. They're going to do the national anthem.
This Sandra Gonzalez.
25 people are watching the live stream on the, on the school district website. We have got to get more people tuning into the boiling point podcast when we do these. Okay. Um, I'm going to leave you, Denise, Mariana unmuted. Mariana, you're still muted, but I'm going to leave you guys unmuted. But I'm here. If you guys need something from me, you can.
So on the right hand side, you have Matthew Gay, Assistant Superintendent. He's the one in red. And the one next to him in the blue shirt is the superintendent task staffs.
Allen Middle School Orchestra.
Um, Amaya Gonzalez, grade eight.
Hello, I'm Protasar Kar from Allen High School, grade eight.
I'm Amanda Alzheimer from Allen Middle School and I'm in eighth grade.
I'm Elise Schmidt and I'm from Allen Middle School and I'm in eighth grade.
Yana Semke, grade eight.
And I'm Morgan Hackett and I am their teacher.
Hello, we're the Cedar Cliff High School, JRTC. I'm Cadet, uh, sorry, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Yun Kim, senior.
I'm Cadet Command Sergeant Major Andrew Snavely.
I'm Cadet Private Isabel Bullock, grade nine.
I'm Cadet and, uh, sorry, Cadet Second Lieutenant Andrew Dubose, grade 11.
Hi, good evening everyone. I'm Brian Granger on the principal at Fairview Intermediate School. Uh, I have here with me, uh, our, our brand new student council officers. We have Jack Herbert, our president. We have Jameson Pearson, our vice president, Max Traxler, our secretary and Scarlett Lepo, our treasurer. And because it is, yes, please give them a round.
So Mr. Granger is the principal that he has the most bullying going on in his school.
For you all, for our beautiful school and amazing staff and, and all the things that, uh, we, we get to enjoy.
That's a middle school you're talking about, right?
That's, that's correct. And before he went to the middle school, because this is the first time, his first year in the middle school as principal, he was in an elementary school. And they had bullying on control. From the, the first week of school, they went to the middle school on control. He doesn't know how to ring in that bullying and he ignores the parents.
Thank you.
Uh, for anybody who's tuning in, you are more than welcome to leave a comment. I will keep my eyes on the comments and bring them up. Mariana and Denise can respond to them. You can ask questions, ask questions about policy, what you're watching and make sure you share this out. Tell your fellow parents to, uh, tune in here.
As a student to leave, and I'd just like to thank them for the card and, uh, I am alumni of, uh, Fairview Elementary.
That is David Brinton.
Unfortunately no longer exists. So enjoy the intermediate school.
Recognition by the board. Mr. Brinton.
I'll go if nobody else has. So, uh, I have two, uh, that I'd like to do today. Uh, one, my first shout out is to Ava Holges. Who's a member of the Redland Girls Wrestling Team. Ava is currently 10 and one on the season and is ranked number one, uh, in the mid pen girls wrestling conference, uh, at 118 pounds. So keep on having a great season Ava. The other thing I'd like to, uh, recognize is the Pennsylvania Chamber is, uh, is sponsoring what's called the National Civics B. Uh, it's open to middle school students. If educators would like to, uh, get their students involved, uh, you should go to pa chamber.org and there's a form there. Use, uh, 2025, uh, when you Google it because their current website's a little outdated. So if you put 2025 National Civics B, there's a form there that you can fill to participate. I think it's a great, uh, civics is something that I think is underappreciated and, uh, anything we can do to promote that, uh, is a great, uh, help to our society. So, uh, I encourage everyone to do that. Thank you, Madam President.
Mrs. Cox?
We're probably going to talk a little bit about the same thing, our trip to Hillside. So I will save some of that thunder for you. We had a great visit at Hillside Elementary this week. They're doing a lot of tremendous things there. Um, I also just want to give a quick shout out. The academic pool competition is coming up. It is going to be held at Crossroads Middle School up here. So I encourage you all to go out and cheer them on.
Hillside does not stand for the pledge FYI. Hillside does not stand for the pledge, FYI.
When is the academic, what, do you have a date for that?
It's a number. It's a whole, it goes for like a whole week.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Who, who?
Correction, I should say second grade that I know for sure does not stand for the pledge. The teacher ignores it as if it's not.
In, in, uh, Mr. Granger's schools, that's been, uh.
No, in Hillside.
On the line, uh, but fourth grade Hillside hedgehogs, let's go. Uh, but good luck to everybody, and again, thank you to the advisors everywhere that create one more opportunity for our students to, uh, do something productive after school. So, thank you. Uh, Mr. Brenton and the rest of the board, seventh and eighth grade Academic Bowl starts next Thursday night, um, at Crossroads, and then the week of the twenty-seventh, uh, Monday, the twenty-seventh is sixth grade. The twenty-eighth is fifth grade, and.
Standing for the pledge of allegiance in the West Shore School District is optional. The children are not required to do it.
Are they all in the evening and all able to be attended by anyone?
That's disappointing.
Yes, and, um, yeah, four or four-thirty start time. Thank you.
It is, and what's more disappointing though, we have teachers encouraging that behavior.
I was on a Hillside visit with, uh, Mrs. Cox and Mr. Trone. And not gonna go over everything, but there's two things that really stood out to me. Shout-out to JB Hunt, um, local trucking company. Uh, they come into the classroom, they brought hats, shirts, books, and they brought a real-sized truck too, which kids get a kick out of, and they donated gift cards too. So, thank you very much to them. And also want to give a shout-out to the Hearts of Hillside. It's a community service organization, uh, in Hillside. Uh, they've gone to the Essex House and the woods to visit, uh, some of the residents. They've made packages for the homeless. Um, they've written cards for our vets and blankets, uh, for kids in the hospital. So, that, I, I think it's just a fantastic thing to teach our kids, uh, to ser, help do service in the community. I know, um, Mr. Hall over there, I know Mr. Trone and myself, our kids are all involved in Boy Scouts, and that's one of the things I really enjoy that they learn from that, was give back to your community. So, way to go to Hillside, and that's all I'm gonna say.
Mrs. Tierney?
Uh, mine is a shout-out for all the partners that have worked together to put together a showing of a documentary to spread hope and fight suicide called My Ascension. It will be held at Cedar Cliff High School with a screening of the film, and then a panel discussion to follow. And, uh, I appreciate the follow-up on the conversations that have occurred in it, within the district.
Anyone else? Dr. Stoll?
Madam President?
Oh, Mrs. Thomas. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, um, I forgot to shout-out to the Redland J R O T C. I attended the Reis Across America on Saturday, December fourteenth, at, uh, the Indian Town Gap National Cemetery.
Mariana, who's talking right now?
That would be Heidi, um, Thomas, the former school board, uh, president. So she's talking from home. She's remote.
She's remote. Okay, I would thought so.
That's an option they have.
I forgot about saying that, but I just look it through.
I, I get it. Sometimes necessary.
Shout-out to the Redland Junior R O T C. Thank you.
I'm thinking maybe people might be having trouble, people turning into our broadcast might be having trouble hearing their feed, because I know I'm having to turn my volume up. Anytime you guys aren't talking, I'm having to turn my volume up to hear them a little bit better. So, we might be having a little bit of volume issues.
No, it's, you have trouble hearing while you're in the room, for certain.
Yeah.
Their audio is terrible.
So I want you to tell them to speak into the microphones as we do here.
Well, we have board member Brian Geislike that he doesn't even like turning his microphone on. And we have Abigail Tierney practicing that also until we call her out on it.
Our, uh, proposed district calendar and are thankful to those who, um, have already replied with feedback. We've received a lot of helpful feedback so far. We do this every year to show and strengthen our partnership with our community, uh, in this important process. And I ask that those who are interested and have yet to submit feedback to do so. Uh, the deadline for submitting feedback is Monday, January twenty-seventh at four PM. And you can find more information about that on the district website, uh, or in your mailbox. What I wanted, this just in, I received an update, uh, since the start of the meeting here, from the CTC, our Career and Tech Center, about some students who, um, entered multiple contests from the Horticulture and Landscaping Program up at the CTC at the Farm Show that was recently held. So, couple of winners here. Emily Ritchie, uh, from, she's a Level Three student from Redland. She won first place in the door decoration with artificial plants and was the best-of-show winner. Second place to Samantha Emma, I hope I said that correctly, Level Three from Redland, also in that same category. Uh, in the cactus garden, uh, first place went to Redland student Emma Olson, and she is a Level One student this year. In terrariums, a first-place winner, Leland Huggins, Level Two student from Redland. And in the mini landscape horticultural business, a first-place award went to Malachi Derrickson, Level Three student from Cedar Cliff. And then two fifth-place winners, uh, Landing Carol, Level Three student from Redland, and Dilling Craig, a Level One student from Redland. A bud vase, uh, fourth place to Samantha Emma again from, uh, Redland. And Emily Ritchie was fourth place in the sympathy design for a cremation category. Those were our, um, uh, those were our winners, uh, that I, I can easily share from the email that I received tonight. And I'm sure I'm gonna have some other, uh, students that will recognize next month. So.
I appreciate all the shout-outs, that they're doing, you know, the, the student recognition and stuff that they do, and everything at the beginning too, but we're twenty-ish minutes in.
I will tell, I will tell you this, that many a times, some of the school board members, especially the veteran ones, will use that shout-out section in order to prolong the meeting, okay? So that hopefully that people would leave. So that part of it has been curbed in a little bit, but that was what they used to do in the past.
Yeah, like I said, I don't mind, you know, shouting out kids and stuff, and, you know, students, that's, that's all good stuff. I'm just, you know, we're, we're twenty-ish minutes in, we haven't really gotten to anything really yet.
Correct. And then add when these meetings go on for four hours.
So where are we at now? What's happening now?
Student comment. Anything that a student wanna comment on, they'll come out and speak.
I am a senior at Cedar Cliff High School.
Well, let's listen in and see what the students are concerned about.
As a student in the school district, it wasn't always easy for me. I started my journey at Hillside. Even as a five-year-old, I struggled to follow rules, make friends, and embrace learning. My parents were constantly called into school to have meetings about my behavior, my learning, and to pick me up when I was too out of control. This label followed me all through elementaries. I was kicked off the bus several times, four days at a time. I missed a lot of recesses. I was mean to other kids, and I refused to do my schoolwork. I did not care about learning. Even though I had plenty of therapy, supportive people that came to my school with me, and teachers that cared, I did not. Because of this, I fell behind. When I started middle school, my behaviors were becoming more intense, and I was constantly in trouble. I was on my way to being sent to a special school, and I still did not change or control myself. In twenty-twenty, COVID hit, and we were all sent for online school. This is when everything started to change. I did not have outside distractions and peers and in-person teachers. And for the, and there was really nothing else for me to do but do my work with my mom, who was also working at home too. For the first time, I learned how to check my grades, and for any missing assignments, I was, I saw that my grades went up when I tried and turned things in, and I liked how that made me feel. I was proud. I worked hard, but I still was behind. In twenty-twenty-one, I was in eighth grade, and we had to make a decision to stay at home for another year instead of going back to school every other day. I really struggle when my routine changes, so it was best for me to stay at home. I kept working on my assignments and watching my grades. A big change that year was that I didn't need as much help from my parents or teachers to stay on track. It felt good to get good grades, and I was proud when I made honor roll. Something you don't know about me is that I love to work. I always have. I have worked on home projects and cars with my dad since I was little. I also liked taking anything I could find apart and trying to put it back together. It drove my parents crazy. But I was very good at it. Even, I even started working on machines and repairing mowers and other small engines. My pap would have me work on landscaping, digging holes, filling holes, and moving rocks. He is not the only one who used to say, "I worked like a man." My parents helped me to get a lawn, lawn care root that year. As an eighth grader, I had five yards. I loved it. I still have that root now, now, but only now. I am covering eleven yards and handing half down to my younger brother. I'm telling you all this to set the stage for the next part of my journey. My mom started talking to me about VOTAC and the different programs there. Then we got information from the school. I was told if I kept my behaviors in check and my grades up, I could apply to enter VOTAC as a freshman in high school. This opportunity changed my life. I worked hard and did great that year. We practiced a lot for my interview to get into the, the VOTAC, and they accepted me. When I started Cumberland Perry VOTAC, I loved it, that there was so much for me to learn, things that I could do with my hands, and I was with other students that with the same interests. There were many times during the three years where I could help other students with their projects, work with equipment, and even help my teachers. I am proud. I took advantage of everything I could and got multiple certificates, or multiple certifications and two certificates. My whole experience was great, and it helped me at Cedar Cliff too. I did not act up at all. Maybe I grew out of it. Maybe I just didn't wanna lose my opportunity at VOTAC. I'm not sure. I started making friends, and for the first time ever, I even had friends over to my house. Friends that invited me over to hang out with them. That was new for me. I decided that year I was going to work hard at school to get myself caught up with my reading and writing, since I messed around instead of learning it when I was younger. Last year, I spent the year getting caught up. This year, I am standing in front of you and reading and sharing my story. It didn't end with VOTAC. I was turning sixteen. I started to reach out to my neighbors at Ward Excavating and asking for a job. Wesley kept me down at the shop. I had to wash all the equipment every day. It was a dirty job, and I was always wet, but I loved it. Sometimes I would do lawn care down there. I did not care what they made me do. I would do it, and I loved it. I started to do some of their small engine equipment, uh, fixing it. I got really good at it. I fixed chainsaws, mowers, weed whackers, leaf blowers, and anything else that I could do. I put an alternator on their F-three-fifty and worked on their mini skid steer. After a while, they asked me if I wanted to go out on the job site with them. And I guess I did really good, because after that, they always took me out. The job that I had to do were sometimes tough. But still, I did it, and I loved it, and I'm proud of it. I asked Wesley if I could do co-op with them for my senior year, and he said yes. This year was, has been the best year ever. I love it. I'm learning so much. I think it's really cool when I get to tell my family that I helped build a bunch of Chick-fil-A's, or that I tore down a bank, or that I was working on moving snow removal at a certain place. I asked Wesley if I could work with them after high school. I enjoy the work, and I wanted to do that as my career. He said yes. Mr. Miller talked to me and Wesley and my parents and asked us what we thought about working full-time sooner. I still can't believe that I am being given this chance, that I am here today. Starting tomorrow, I will no longer report to Cedar Cliff for gym class, English, and then work. Instead, you're looking at a full-time employee at Ward Excavating. Not only did I make it, but I did really well. I'm living the life I dreamed of. It wasn't always easy, but I did it. For any teachers that are listening that I gave a hard time to, I'm sorry, and thank you for trying. To my high school teachers, thank you for all your support, and big shout-out to Mr. Blom for everything. To the school board, thank you for programs like VOTAC and allowing me to get in my freshman year. I would not be here today if it wasn't for that. Thank you for co-op, and to Mr. Miller, I feel ready, I am ready to get out there and work. I am very proud of myself today, and for who and what I am. Thank you.
Ezra, we've never met. But that was so brave of you to say, like, where you came from and where you're going. You are wiser than your years because of what you went through. And I, I'm just so proud of you. I'm so touched. Um, I'm sure Admin has a few things to say, but thank you for coming in. That was very inspirational.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was the school board president, Kelly Brent speaking.
I'm very proud of you. As a mother and a teacher, I could take your mom out. Sitting in the audience, just beaming and watching you and saying your words with you.
And then it's Miss Brenda Cox.
So proud of you, and I, from the, the board and from the, I had, I'm so proud of you. You've done good.
Yeah, I respect this kid's story. You know, it's definitely a success story, but I thought it was like for questions. I didn't realize that it was supposed to be for comments.
They always give a comment section for the students first and then the public. Now, this section was intended for kids to air concerns. However, when they started being exposed, okay, of all the, the messiness and the darkness of the West Shore School District, they changed this little section of what I call our rah-rah section to show how great we are, what we're doing with the kids, and to give us our, you know, taps in the back. That's how this changed. Not to say they still don't, you know, give concern, some kids they do, or are tapped, but as said, but that's why this section, you know, goes along.
But you're not a student who was on my radar, right? So despite whatever challenges you presented, uh, to this point, you have not been on my radar. But, um, I, I have a couple of things that I'll try to keep joined together here.
And we are genuinely happy for these kids. Now, that's Tostos speaking right now.
You and your story has, though. Dr. Granger was kind enough to send an email out, uh, to everyone.
That is correct.
Teachers from Lower Allen, from Rossmoyn, from Allen, from Cedar Cliff, to let everybody know that you would be talking tonight and a bit of the story that I believe your mom shared. Um, so I know that I saw some replies from folks. Um, so I know that I saw some replies from folks that knew you when.
Mary, I'm gonna step away for just.
And um.
Okay.
So lots of people that, that were part of that journey. I certainly don't want to take anything away from what you have done and the transformation that you, you've had. But for a moment, I also just want to thank everybody, every adult working for this district that had some influence in working with you over the years. This, it, it sounds like this isn't something that happened overnight, right?
Yeah.
Finding the right things that made it click took a while and it took patience and it took struggle. And it took challenge, yours, the adults, and yet here we all are. I, I mean, honestly, I feel like crying tonight, crying tears of joy. It just touches us. It touches our soul for people who don't know you as closely as many, many others do. And I can't, when I think about how do we measure ourselves and how do we know that we're doing good things here? You're sitting right here telling a story tonight that, that.
This is definitely a fluff piece at this point, right?
The last plug I'm gonna make is.
Denise, I'm sorry. Only I, I'm the only one that can see you shake your head. I just want to let you know that.
No, that is, that is correct. It is a fluff piece and this is the reason, correct me if I'm wrong, um Denise. When we started exposing what they were doing, then this became a fluff piece that we go through. Now, we're happy for these children and their achievements. Don't get it wrong. But it's, we are happy, right? And but it's for them to pat themselves on the back. We are great. Don't listen to what people are saying.
Yeah.
Yes, and this has been a practice that's been in place since I started attending meetings back in early twenty twenty one. They gloss over, they stretch out, like, you know, some good things happening really long. And then we barely have time to, you know, they wear people out.
But tonight Ezra, I'm blown away by your story and I'm glad.
So they don't come.
I just, yes, if you were watching, I just had.
It's a pattern, a, a very established.
Ezra, what's the job that you're going to have? Do you know your job title?
And I'll have you know, a lot of these people leave their jobs to come to these meetings. They're hungry, they haven't drank water nor a meal and this drags out for hours.
Listen, I ate dinner before the meeting. I'm already hungry.
Mr. Miller, Mr. Gray is part of the team that has, uh, has been along the ride for you. Thank you for shouting him out. I love your story, man.
Yeah, who knows what kind of radar he has.
In York County Schools called the Turnaround Achievement Award. And uh, I'm listening to your story and if, if it was up here, it's absolutely an amazing turnaround. You should be, I, and I.
And you know, it's good when it's well-deserving kids. That's great. But they also take this action for children that they indoctrinate to attack the conservative board, especially Mrs. Brent.
I'm all for the kids and their success stories. Yeah, I'm all for the kids and their success stories. You know, it's great. Absolutely, absolutely. Is this the forum for that?
Manipulate.
Is this the forum for that?
What do you mean for the congratulating?
What do you mean?
The success stories, like, like, yeah, like, like for that, that whole, the last twenty minutes, is that, is this the forum for that?
This is what they do.
Wondering, like I said, I don't have a problem with anything these kids are talking about. That, that's, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but.
This is what they do.
And things, yeah, but.
They can actually, you know, plan something just to honor these children and invite people and stream it if you want. But this is what they do and the meetings drag on. So you're right. I mean, we love, you know, achieving the things we're glad about that. Um, but yeah, it goes very long sometimes.
Let's see what these girls have to say.
Increasing membership is enhancing our opportunities for participation. This year, our FBLA chapter has experienced significant growth with our membership rising to a hundred and fourteen individuals. In contrast, we had only thirty seven members last year, representing a remarkable increase of two hundred percent. This expansion presents numerous opportunities, enabling us to engage more actively in our community, organize multiple informational field trips and participate in various competitions with a larger group of members. The state leadership workshop was conducted from November second to November fourth at the Kalahari Resort in the Poconos. This workshop is exclusively for officer members. During our stay at Kalahari, we participated in large meetings with FBLA members from across Pennsylvania, as well as smaller sessions that concentrated on various business topics. The topics covered included business leadership skills, strategies for the events we were involved in, resume building and more. While there was extensive dialogue regarding FBLA, the opportunity to network with representatives and gain insight into practices adopted by other regions and chapters proved to be the most rewarding aspect. The regional leadership conference was held on December nineteenth at York College, where we successfully, successfully gathered eighty one Redland members. During the regional event, some participants had the opportunity to present their competitive projects before a panel of judges, while those taking objective tests listened to speakers and awaited the commencement of the award ceremony. The competition is intense with only the top five test takers in each category advancing to the state level, whereas only the top two presenters in each category qualify. Currently, forty six members have secured their spots for the state competition and we are still awaiting updates regarding state only competitors. The state leadership conference is scheduled to occur April seventh to ninth at the Hershey Lodge and Hotel. The state leadership conference is the culminating state level event of the year. A multi-day conference with two thousand five hundred plus FBLA students in attendance from across the state. Students attend the conference to elect state leaders, conduct state business, experience leadership and career development training and engage in statewide competitions to determine who will represent P A in the national competitions in California this coming July twenty twenty five. For Redland, the number of members attending has significantly raised the overall expenses for this trip. We are actively participating in various fundraising initiatives and are also exploring additional opportunities to reduce the financial burden on our members. It is easier to, it is essential to consider not only the current year's expenses, but also the financial implications for the club in the following year. The majority of our funding takes place within the school store that the club started a few years ago. When the school store first started, we were cash only with a small selection of items. We now invested in using Square, which allows us to take credit cards and we sell a variety of beverages, snacks and redland merchandise. The school store is a hundred percent student operated and provides students with the opportunities to volunteer within the club, learn how to count money and much more. There is constantly a number of students and faculty coming in to purchase the items that we put in the store. We listen to feedback and adjust our inventory based on what items are being sold faster than others. However, when changing the items we carry in the store, there are several guidelines that we have to follow.
I just want to say that uh Krista Sellers had uh something to say about when we were talking earlier. About praising their own foundation and uh the radar about the superintendent.
Oh yeah, they love to praise out West Shore Foundation.
And Christie, I, I, we can all see Sandra.
In regards to us, FBLA has provided all of us with skills and it has helped us develop qualities that build each of our characters. We are better people in aspects like taking charge, being responsible, having improved social skills and so much more. Additionally, we formed several new friendships which created a family amongst the club. When it comes to preparing for college, we have learned to face every challenge head on. You have to make adjustments along the way and improvise, but that is when we have all grown the most. As each of us head into the next chapter of our lives, we know that we can always turn around and remember everything we have been taught and everything we have learned because of FBLA and the people who make it what it is. Thank you.
Mr. Brinton.
Hi, uh, is Ella, you the parliamentarian?
Yes.
Uh, in your future, are you looking to be an attorney or what interests you in becoming the parliamentarian?
Um, so I actually am going to be a nurse, but I am the parliamentarian basically just, I don't know. It seek, I seeked it because it was interesting to like, all the roles that I get to learn about and stuff are following those to make sure what's going on right in the club.
If you, if you join groups or whatever in the future will be helpful uh to those that you know parliamentary procedure and so forth. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Stoltz.
Yeah, I, I have a question for you as far as the store goes. What's been the hottest item this year?
We buy like three cases of like, well, like twelve and they get sold out in like a week, a week and a half.
All right. I was afraid I, I should have, uh, that I, I, I didn't quite set this up. You know, Dr. Argot's over there, you know, monster drinks. What, what's going on there, right? So uh, how about non-food or drink item? What's been the hottest item?
Well, we have gum.
Clothing, clothing. Yeah, clothing, spirit wear or um, uh, things, school spirit oriented things that uh.
I'd like one of the parents of the West Shore School District to fill out a comment card so that they can let everybody know this. Into the microphone.
We have actually said it. We said it on video. We said it, uh, we said it in these meetings. We said it to their faces. We sent emails and it's like this allergy when it comes to the microphone.
Things that are in there and I, I have to admit, I was at Redland today and I've got to get over to, I've got to get over to the store, so.
That was, I'm sorry, the front and center comment is about Sandra.
Girls, I didn't know if you mentioned, does everybody know what FBLA stands for? Tell them.
FBLA stands for Future Business Leaders of America.
Yes.
The superintendent doesn't know what FBLA stands for? Is that what we just heard?
Yep, he gets paid the big money.
We really just heard that, that the superintendent doesn't know what the FBLA is. I'm not even in this school. I know what the FBLA is.
He knows what a taco is.
Does he know what a taco is?
So, you know what taco that you buy in the store, yeah.
It's hard for the West Shore people. Christie, you know, you can join us. Would you like to join us in the studio here?
I, I just thought it was important to say that this organization.
All lives matter, Christie. All. Oh, I know she is.
She keeps us chugging.
Christie, jump on.
Yeah, Christie, you can join us. I think she's in the chat, right?
Couple of you have known of or known since you were in elementary school and youth lacrosse.
See, they, they can drag this out for twenty five, thirty five minutes.
This is ridiculous. I know, listen, I love kids.
Christie too, and we want to hear the good stuff, but they, they drown on and on.
Yeah, this is uh, this is, this is crazy. This is crazy. You know what? And uh, if there's any other parents of the West Shore School District watching, thing, I can't adjust the description. So no, I can't. All right. You know what? I'm gonna go put it in the comments right quick.
I shared the live on my Facebook.
Mariana, I'm gonna let you uh, let you guys talk for a minute while I uh, I'm gonna put the link to our studio uh, as a comment in case any of the parents want to. Join us here in the studio.
Student activity. Thank you, Ms. Wiggins. It's, it's, it's greatly appreciated. These opportunities are so important for our students. I'm so glad we're able to offer them at both schools. I think we have uh, FBLA chapters at both of the high schools now.
Mr. Brinton?
Yeah, if I could just have one other que, so you went from thirty seven members up to one hundred and fourteen this year. What would you say, what would you, how did you increase your membership in such a dramatic way?
Yeah, so we definitely got a lot more involved with using um, social media platforms because everyone always looks at those. So specifically Instagram, um, we have a TikTok account now. Additionally, um, last year prior to the school year, we went to Crossroads and spoke to the eighth graders about what FBLA is. Um, we spoke in all of the computer classes. So I think that definitely helped us increase our membership this year. And also, um, uh, we have a big increase in juniors because of National Honor Society requirements and stuff like that. So it's definitely helped our um, chapter.
All right, I have the uh, link now to the studio in the uh, in the comment section. If anybody wants to join us, if any parents of the West Shore School District would like to join us.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies very much. It's a pleasure.
Please join us in the uh, may join us in the studio. And uh, I saw a message from Mariana. She said that the West Shore Parents United Group is um, watching it together. So thank you guys for tuning in if I'm catching you while some of you are tuning in.
Very nice. Glad people are participating with us.
Welcome home. We need to do this more often. Let your voice be heard.
Yeah, we actually, we might, we might need to make this a, a more regular thing, yeah. I think it's gonna, I think it would help the parents too, to be able to like have this kind of commentary while the meeting is actually going on too, to specify our.
Yes.
That are happening.
That would, that would be wonderful. Honestly.
Yeah, yeah, you gotta run the balance though. We gotta, I mean, anybody who's not, we gotta get the word out there. Anybody who's not at the meeting, we gotta get tuning in.
Correct.
And we gotta get tuning in here. Yeah, we got to get them tuning in here to the Boiling Point Podcast and not to. Not on their website.
Oh, here we go.
Here we go. Here comes the clown circus. Public comment section. Now the community will speak on an agenda item. You can speak two times in the beginning and towards the end.
Well. We appreciate that, Madam President, but the Boiling Point Podcast is tuning in tonight and we'll be providing commentary when some bullshit comes on our screen.
We have one in-person public comment.
Only one? Because we're tuning in.
That's because we're not there.
Yeah, word, now the word, I was gonna say the word got out, the Boiling Point Podcast is live streaming.
Bet you a thunder.
I was thinking that we tied. There she goes.
Hold on, we're bringing Christie, we're bringing Christie in.
Um, I see that.
But let's uh, let's hear what Sandra has to say quick.
Expanding our software availability for our busing, which I commend you for. My uh, neighbor has a uh, student on, on the intermediate bus. And frequently that intermediate bus's time slot fluctuates greatly. Now, I'm sure the geo-tracking that you all are running to expand is for your administrative purposes. But I want you to consider if it's available for parents to be able to log on, it would help greatly in inclement weather. I mean, this bus has varied at times fifteen and twenty minutes to the negative or to the positive, either way. And, and not, no criticism here. I know we open to new schools.
My first bus ride home from school and high school, two and a half hours.
Or first student or whomever our, our busing contracts with is, is struggling to keep uh, the buses running and, and staffed and all that. And I get all that. But if you would consider that, I, I don't even know if that's available through that program. And I'm sure it would be yet another added expense, but it's something that may be a, an asset that would be worth uh, expanding on because of that variation. And I, I don't foresee busing getting any easier. I mean, it's, it's all about keeping buses running mechanically and keeping them staffed. And that always is going to have somewhat of a variation in it. So as you guys look at that, if that is available, I think that needs to be considered for the parents' sake. Thank you.
And she is correct. With more than money that they burn on things we don't need, that's something we need.
That's right. We don't need no gender bathroom. We need buses that move.
That is absolutely right. And the voice you're hearing is uh, is Christie. Christie, do I call you Chrissy or Christie?
You can call me crusty.
I can call you what? You know, I got a friend, I got another friend who goes like by that name. That's insane. All of you, you're all insane.
Is there any discussion, questions?
Oh, I got plenty of discussion questions.
What are they voting on right now?
Honestly, I missed it.
How fast did that happen?
Yeah, like lickety-split.
Was it the bosses?
The what?
No.
Was it the bosses?
Yeah, right. No, I'll see if I pick, pick up the agenda. Take a look.
The treasurer's report?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, with deposits of approximately twenty seven million and cash disbursements, payroll transfers totaling approximately thirty five million invested in available funds of December thirty first, twenty twenty four were sixty four million, three hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and ninety cents.
Oh, they're approving the treasurer's report. See how quickly that can happen? That's why.
They always do. They always do.
Doing these live watchalogs. That's why we're gonna start doing some of these live watchalogs so that people can understand the process.
What was the last thing they voted on?
What, what they're voting on right now, I believe, is the treasurer report. If I'm not mistaken. What, what they're voting on right now, I believe, is the treasurer report. If I'm not mistaken.
I miss, I miss prior. It went so fast. I, I missed it. Well, they were talking about buying into that bus thing. So that's probably what they were voting.
Well, now what they originally voted for was approval of the minutes of last week's, uh, meeting. Then after that was the treasurer's report. Now they're gonna be talking about the health and safety plan, Denise.
Uh, Lord Jesus. Well. You need to keep all that crap in there. Oh, I, I got something for that.
Uh, we have another viewer, Celeste.
Hi, Celeste.
We have a link, I left a link, comments. If you'd like, anybody would like to join us in the studio.
Okay, hold on.
Uh, we felt that it was most beneficial to do this. There, I'm happy to report there are no changes to the existing plan. There's nothing for you to vote on or approve tonight. Uh, but it is our acknowledgement that, uh, we are compliant with that requirement.
Okay, listen, guys, the health and safety plan and the comprehensive plans. Can be changed at any time. And we need to move on that.
So on, uh, January 9th, I chaired my first, uh, meeting of the finance committee. Received our, our monthly financial updates from Mrs. Boone. Additionally, we reviewed perspective costs and planning for the four projects that the board has identified as their priorities moving forward, which are the Redland Athletic Field improvements, the Naterium, the refurbishing of Allen Middle School and full day kindergarten. I'd also like to add that now is the time to be reviewing the respective budget. As we move forward with it, if there are things in it that you don't agree with or would like to see change between now and say our March meetings, would be the time to bring it forward. To the administration or my attention to see if possible revisions can be made, keep in mind the timeline for approval. As always, if anyone has any questions or suggestions regarding the budget, please let me know so that we can see what we can do about it. Thank you, and that's my report.
Is David the head of finance?
Chair?
I am reporting for the West Shore Foundation in three regards. The fall, the spring grant cycle, when the grants were due December 1st, the review has occurred. We had, uh, 21 great requests. Seeking, uh, nearly $50,000 and, um, the, they have been reviewed and publisher's clearinghouse may appear at some point. I will give you no more information, but I am going to continue looking at Dr. Stoltz and Mr. Gay for a date. Good, thank you. Um. The next, um, item coming up is Putting Students First, and that is a fun, obviously, we fundraise, bring money in, and we drive it out to the schools. And Putting Students First is a miniature golf tournament that, uh, had its inaugural year last year. It is May 3rd at Liberty Forge from 9 to 2. And, uh, the foundation is looking for sponsors for that event, but we're also, we would like to see as many people involved as possible in terms of coming out and playing. It's a, a more affordable than other opportunities and ton of fun. So.
Despite the wet weather last year, it really was a lot of fun. So, um, we had a really good time and it was not your, not your typical mini golf, uh, experience. Lots of, uh.
The senior board members and administration, I suppose, they all part of this West Shore Foundation. So this is something that they push and they push hard.
Sponsorships and, uh, check out social media. They're very good at that. We'll be coming out.
So we need to look into the West Shore Foundation next.
Brace yourself, we got some stuff for you.
Oh, yeah. The queen of not knowing what gender she is runs this.
Abigail Terry?
She will not say that a woman is a woman. She doesn't know the definition of gender.
Yeah.
This is the policy meeting.
Denise and I are gonna be breaking down that policy meeting because, uh, even though I couldn't livestream it, I recorded it. So I have all the footage.
She might not honestly know, Mariana.
I'm not, I, I'm not sure. I'm not sure of her.
That's what I'm saying. She might not know.
That's the thing about, that's a great thing about me too. I'm outside the school district. I'm not even, you know, I'm an independent media guy. I can, I can say what I want.
Uh, it is May 3rd, 9 to 2 at Liberty Forge. And, uh, the event that will come after that is, uh.
Oh, Krista Sellers has something to say. I assume she's talking about the West Shore Foundation.
Yes, ma'am. What she says.
Krista says it's full of liberals.
Yeah, check out the bios, uh, Jonathan. Don't say so.
And West Shore United. Okay, we'll check out, um, we'll check out both.
Yep. Krista, you're gonna get them arrested.
West Shore United, they, they just turned this year and it's all in trouble.
You got backup right here.
Did who arrest him?
You guys, Mariana. They're just protecting public schools. Come on. And we're one of the people speaking freely. So, um, let them try.
Let them try and take me.
It don't matter.
Unless you're conservative.
We're not abusing our speech, so they can get cross.
Celeste says, I'm a homeschooler and I'll say what I want also. I always do. See, that's what I'm saying.
That's right.
Jump in, Celeste.
I wasn't, I wasn't homeschooled, but I will still say what I want. I'm wearing, you can't see it at the moment because I'm off the screen, but I got the First Amendment. I wore my First Amendment shirt tonight specifically for this event.
There you go. Bring it on. That's an awesome shirt. I want to get that one.
We like those shirts.
Yeah, they are. They are awesome.
I prefer to have be kind shirts. Oh, stop it. I'm gonna get it in teal just for you with pink puffballs or something.
See you off this podcast.
He said, Krista Sellers says me too. I assume she has, maybe she's talking about the shirt or maybe she's, oh, she's gotta be talking about that she'll say whatever she wants. That's probably what she's talking about.
Krista, twice.
But she, you should, Kristy, you should sell the T-shirt too. You should, you should say me too for the T-shirt as well. So.
It is a great T-shirt. I really like it. They're still blah, blah, blah. See, like, this is why people don't come. They wear you out.
Celeste, I don't have, um, I don't have one of those shirts yet, but that's, that's all of an idea.
I want one for this.
Design, uh, Celeste's gonna call it her I'm a woman shirt.
What is a woman?
I mean, I, if you want, I can make the shirt very descriptive.
Hilarious. We're gonna get kicked off the air.
Oh, only on Facebook and YouTube. We'll still on Rumble. Anybody who's watching, follow us on Rumble. If we get kicked off of YouTube or Facebook, we will not get kicked off of Rumble. So make sure, you know, I don't mind people tuning in on Facebook and YouTube, but if you, if we ever can't find us, tune in on Rumble. We're not gonna get kicked off there.
What is this man talking about? Cause somebody like.
I'm gonna go take a smoke break and.
Who is talking? Yeah, I have to, uh, take a quick break. I'll be back in a few minutes.
But then again, anytime we hear him speak, we hear.
I think we lost Denise.
She died.
No, I think she, uh, we lost her in the studio, I mean.
She laughed. She, she couldn't take it anymore.
No, I, I, I need to use ladies room. Just give me a minute.
Oh, that's, you didn't just say, I need a minute.
Too much information?
If anybody who's watching, please hit that.
I did.
Anybody who's watching, please hit that thumbs up button. Hit that heart button. The heart button will give us further, um, you know, further, uh, reach than if you just hit the thumbs up. So hit that heart button or one of the other emojis and leave, uh, leave several comments as some of our viewers are going.
Three of the items that you mentioned as part of that report, um, are on the agenda for approval tonight. The Highland Roof Project, the, uh, agreement with Fidavia and the credit, the, the change orders that include that credit. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is President, a quick one. Uh, in, in terms of Transportation Committee, we, we just met this past Tuesday and I would say, uh, very diligently.
That is Adam Trung and he is our school board communist. He's, um, sitting next to Brenda Coxey on the right with the, um, crazer. Yeah, he kinda mad at me cause I call him a soy boy.
Interested in Williamson. We're soliciting bids for that. And, um, you know, again, just really proud to be a part of that committee that in two short months, uh, you know, we formed, listened to the public, have a very, very good RFP going out. So knock on wood, hopefully.
Sandra Gonzalez just spoke about the disarray of your school bus systems and you're happy to be a part of the committee that's running it.
Mister Sanders, the date would be.
Congratulations.
That's why it's not running.
Bid opening, uh, in the RFP document, bid opening is February 18th, if I remember correctly. Uh, and we're looking to do approval then through the school, full school board in March. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
So you guys will have a new busing system, just in time for the school year to be over.
That's what they said last year. Yeah, that was a catastrophe this, this year. Believe it when I see it.
Mrs. President. Mrs. Thomas. Sorry, we did have a policy meeting today and we'll report on that next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Next up is business items. Dr. Argot?
Thank you. Is the recommendation of the administration that the board approves paying the bills from December 8th through January 9th?
They're paying bills. Yay.
Do we have any discussion? The motion carries?
Well, I don't know who runs this. I, they, what the, this, they also really, really need a new producer.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Who needs a new producer?
The, the entire West Shore School Board. This, this whole, this whole setup, this whole thing has been just terribly produced. I don't know who's running the damn cameras, but they need, uh, to learn how. When there's a vote, we wanna see the vote. That we don't, we wanna see this before the vote and then we wanna see them vote. Who controls this?
I'm not sure. They even changed when the people speak, the community, you were able to see the board. Now they don't let you see the reaction of the board anymore.
This is just.
We have a second? Is there any discussion? Oh, right. Take over.
Hold on. This will be conducted as a roll call vote. All members will be recorded as voting in favor unless otherwise noted. The most the motion passes with a vote of eight, zero.
Thanks.
Thank you for missing us two votes, producer of the West Shore Board Meeting. You're not even showing us that. This is the most, this is the most astonishing thing that I've seen in the meeting so far. There's been a lot of astonishing things, but this is just ridiculous.
You wanna see astonishing, go to one of the meetings in person.
I wanna go, I, I am. I'm gonna go and I'm gonna talk to directly to the person who controls the feed of the school board meetings. I would like to ask that the board immediately vote to remove said person.
Do we have any discussion? This will be considered a roll call vote. All members will be recorded as voting in favor unless otherwise noted.
Three votes. Oh, thank you, producer. Someone find out who's actually controlling this part and then connect them to this feed so I can tell them how bad of a job they're doing.
That's right, Madam President. Uh, this evening I have for you revised board policy 254, which was looked at by the, uh, board policy committee previously and has been through legal counsel and we want to put it on public display and hopefully bring it back next month for your endorsement as a revision.
Thank you. Mr. Argot?
Uh, Madam President, it's time for public comment. We have no student public comments. We do have a number of comments that were left over from the policy meeting that we didn't get through. Some electronic public comments and then some in person. Would you like me to take them all?
Please.
Please.
I'm gonna start with the people who put in public comments for the policy meeting that did not have the opportunity to do so. Danielle Gross?
She is an advocate. Gross is an advocate.
Sanders back again. Shout out Sandra.
You know, during our, uh, public, or I'm sorry, school policy meeting, as we're observing, again, we keep hearing to, for you guys to defer to the experts. And I want you guys to realize that once again, we parents are sitting here and we're looking at what is happening to our public school system nationally. And we're saying, please, please don't follow the experts, the quote experts. Please, you have to understand here that hearing, well, this is the way we've always done it. It's no longer acceptable. I, I would venture if you would ask someone like Elon Musk when he took over Twitter and those folks looked at him and said, well, this is how we do it here. And then he laid off, what was it, like two thirds of the staff and the thing runs better than it did. Okay?
Go for it, Sandra.
So doing things the way we've always done things, a lot of times doesn't cut the mustard. We vote you guys into office oftentimes for a couple of reasons. One of them being our taxes. We want our money spent responsibly. The second one is policy. And if you guys can't control what policy is reviewed and voted on, then why are, why are you even here? If the administration can just sort of make all these decisions.
She's right though.
What do they even need you for? I would say step up to the plate. Use our solicitor to find out what your power and rights are that the voters empower you with when they vote you into office and use that. As far as the policies that were reviewed this evening, uh, as far as, uh, men or biological males in female sports, I want you to know something. If you want to apply for a job with our Secret Service and you are a man, or you wanna, uh, apply for a job with our Secret Service and you're a woman, there are two different standards of how many pushups you have to be able to do, how many sit-ups you have to be able to do.
That's correct.
And how far you have to run as a standard. And there's a reason for that. There is a total reason for that. And I want you guys to really think about that hard when you take our little girls and you potentially put them in harm's way with someone who has a lot more strength and a lot more endurance than our girls do. Please do everything you can to protect our girls. The other thing is, is the bathroom policy. When I told you guys on election day that I was standing at the polls and I was saying to parents, talking, walking by, things about the school. And when they would give me their contact information, there was one issue that day I was mentioning. The gender neutral bathrooms at our high school. 90% of the people that I engaged with did not even know they existed. And fathers particularly grabbed that clipboard out of my hand, even though they were sick of all the text messages we were all getting during the election season. Sometimes 12, 13 a day, even though they were sick of all the emails that the campaigns were sending them, 12 and 13 a day, they ripped that clipboard out of my hand and they freely gave me their cell phone numbers and their email addresses and said, please keep me up to speed as to what's going on. And I intend to do that. And I want you guys to know that this is what the public cares about. This is what fathers care about. I've got a third grade granddaughter in this school who came last year to swim at the pool and changed in the changing room. If we keep going on the trajectory we're on, pretty soon those changing rooms will be co-ed. Where does it stop? I was in a bathroom at a basketball game at Redland and boys came in. Now they had taken, so that none of the parents would know, these sheets of paper and covered up the name on boys and girls.
It's happening in the schools. Kids are speaking about it too.
They don't want the parents to know that those bathrooms are gender neutral. So they covered them up. Unacceptable.
Thank you.
They never sent a letter to the parents, an email. They never have a policy. It was never spoken. They did it behind our backs.
So what, she ran out of time?
You, you only get four minutes.
So you, so the parents only get four minutes, but they can fluff themselves for 45 minutes?
Yeah.
Correct.
Some of these school board members have seen too many adult movies.
Here we go.
Oh, no, it's Freddie Kruse.
Wait a minute, isn't this the guy that who, who, who mentioned my podcast name but didn't? Wait a minute, isn't this the guy that who 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 mentioned my podcast name but didn't?
Dr. Wacko.
So at last meets, last week's meeting, I heard a father express concern about his daughter. I heard a well-intentioned parent looking out for his kid and I heard him share about his child feeling uncomfortable about a transgender student.
Ah, he's gonna try and stress this, watch.
I'm gonna walk away. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to. The only way anybody's gonna hear anything he has to say is if I walk away from this thing.
But it seems there was a lot of conflation between sex and gender as recognized by the.
Because are you kidding me, dude? Are you kidding me, dude? Are you kidding me, dude? All right, I'm gonna walk away so that you guys can handle this, cuz I'll.
He's a clown. Don't, he's a clown.
This is a psychologist that gave us two hundred hate thing talking about the different sexes. It's over two hundred.
If you want to leave the comments, uh I will get to them as soon as I come back, but I can't watch this jackass. I watched this jackass uh speak before uh and he's smart enough not to call out my show by name, but he was talking about my show and he still didn't know what he was talking about then. He doesn't know what he's talking about now and I can't deal with it.
They're just people. Um and in schools, we're talking about kids.
Nobody said they're not people. They're confused people.
Remember at a meeting last year.
The kid's safety is paramount. Okay, not.
Give them credit for that cuz a lot of people won't. But then an adult verbally accosted them in the restroom, right back there, in this space. An adult did that to a child.
That is a lie has been proven to be a lie.
Part is that story happens far too often. It's not the trans kid.
This guy's a snake. I'm just gonna say it.
So my hope for the folks in this community and on this board is to take the time and effort to better inform yourselves on this topic. It's incredibly complex before implementing any policy changes.
What's this back ass's name?
Can be traced back for millennia across cultures worldwide. There's records forty five hundred years back in Prague of transgender buried Sumerian priests from five thousand to three thousand B.C. Gender nonconformity throughout ancient Greece, so on and so forth.
I need to go, I need to go.
Ask him if he knows about Sodom and Gomorrah.
Yeah, he doesn't. This guy does not so does not know anything. This guy does not know anything. He wants to quote science, facts and stuff and it's not fact, okay? Just cuz some scientists have agreed that this case is not the case. All biology speaks against what this guy is saying.
I think he's trying to get um free clients because he works as a therapist with um the LGBTQ community.
This guy is just as mentally disturbed as anyone.
I agree. He's gone as far as saying that he will take one of those kids in the initial meeting and sign them a letter. Give them a letter, they can go ahead and get the um surgery when that's a problem with that surgery.
That man should not be allowed to speak at school board meetings due to mental illness.
Yep. I'm being nice tonight.
Be nice, I'm not gonna be nice to that clown.
Thank you. The policy meeting was, as always, interesting and um I do recognize that it is a complicated topic and that they're very strong.
Is this lady gonna be on our side or against us? All right, now I am walking away.
Though I know it was cut short, that you really were headed in a good direction, that you took it off this table and that you agreed to have some experts chatting, perhaps Jay is an appropriate person to be involved and that you were also very cognizant of the legal issues. So I want to thank you. I thought you did had a contentious conversation, but you ended up in a good place.
No, I don't think she was in that. Oh, that's so funny. They are like.
That's not what they did.
You've entered a new di- dimension. You've entered.
That's not even what happened in the meeting.
Heather Keller.
Help us, Lord.
Jonathan, she's on our side.
Welcome, Heather.
Thank you. First, I'm very disappointed at the discourse from the policy committee meeting earlier this evening where several committee members indicated that they were acting on behalf of just their stakeholders. I'd like to remind all of the board members that while you were elected in your respective regions, you make decisions that impact all of the district and everyone in it.
The thing is. They're representing the majority. The majority don't want this mess. It's only the minority that makes the most noise.
Pull out policies from Northern York School District as examples to follow for sex-based bathroom and sports policies. As those policies were crafted by the Independence Law Center. That's the very same Independence Law Center often recommended by the P A Economic Growth PAC that endorsed board members Thomas, Brent.
Here we go, and you can't mention names. The blue card says you can't name, mention names, right? There you go.
For crafting discriminatory policies that made for costly lawsuits in various school districts. It makes you wonder what the priorities are for the majority of the board and who they are really acting on behalf of.
Oh, this woman is definitely not.
Kelly needs to gavel.
No, she is. Just let her go. She's on our side.
Do not believe Christie.
Some of the public comments last week, I find it absolutely disgusting that there are adults attending our board meetings and giving examples of them entering restrooms and claiming to identify as someone of the opposite gender. Why are they sexualizing children like that? We've even had adults at board meetings misgendering children in the restrooms here in this very building.
That was me.
This is ridiculous.
I say there's a lot more of a problem outside of the schools than inside of them.
The job is I never.
We go through, we get everyone. We get the, we get the one who immediately locks their doors as soon as they get into a car
or make sure that, you know, you're aware of your surroundings if you're in an unfamiliar place. You can't walk down the street without wondering about your safety. Respecting that, though, I feel that baseless claims and fear tactics.
I would like to see the stats that they can't walk down the street safely.
Even go to the bathroom at school without feeling safe.
Safety of our LGBTQIA+ community. Every student should be treated equally under the law, whether they are a part of that community or not.
Equally means equally, not special treatment. Think about what you're saying.
Students to use the wrong restroom.
This is the entitled generation.
Forcing them to use a separate restroom puts those students at a greater risk for bullying, harassment and creating.
No, no, them walking into the wrong bathroom at a greater risk.
It also puts their mental and physical health at risk. In the twenty twenty-one National School Climate Survey conducted by the Gay, Lesbian and Straight Education Network, they found that forty-five point one percent of LGBTQ students.
Little fun fact, the lesbian and gay community doesn't want the rest of the alphabet soup mafia with them anymore. Think about that while you're lumping them into your cause.
The mental and physical toll that that would take on you. It's already illegal for anyone to enter a restroom with the intent to hurt or harass someone.
Oh, well, then if it's against the law, of course, that must be quiet. It doesn't matter. I I mean, I know that every, that every, every crazy person out there that breaks the law just didn't realize that they were breaking the law. As soon as you informed them of that, they were immediately, they were immediately, uh you know, they immediately asked for forgiveness.
On the policies that matter, the business items that matter and the issues that matter. Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I talk over her entire four minutes?
Margaux Sanders.
That's good. It was worth listening to by her.
Yeah, she, we've, we've heard enough of her.
She has a lot of good points.
I mean, she thought a little bit, yeah.
We're gonna kick Chrissy out of the podcast.
You're gonna get booed at, Chrissy.
It's crusty. It's crusty.
I'm not calling, I was, I'm not calling. No, I know.
It's exactly like a crusty crab today.
Access on the board policy committee agenda. Tom Flynn expressed concerns related to the potential of anti-LGBTQ plus policies shared in New York Dispatch. Deb Gray expressed concerns about the items in item four of the board policy committee agenda. Carol Hellso expressed concerns about the discussion of sex-based distinctions in athletics and universal bathrooms at the board policy committee.
And they're all saying the same thing.
Express concerns related to sex-based distinction in athletics and universal bathrooms as part of the board policy meeting. Kim Patterson expressed concerns about the York Dispatch article titled West Shore to Begin Discussion of Anti-LGBTQ Plus Policies.
This is ridiculous.
Mariana Reed argued against implementing universal bathrooms. Jim Short, sorry.
At least someone argued against it.
Shared his concerns about the potential of boys tasting athletic opportunities away from girls. Martha Huber asked questions about why the board is discussing LGBTQ plus rights. Kristin Yoush shared concerns about the potential of adopting policies which were discriminatory towards students who are LGBTQIA+. David Wilson advocated for allowing students to participate at their presented gender and allow.
But they can discriminate against conservative kids. They can discriminate against straight kids because we got some teachers in there doing some shicey stuff in the schools, discriminating against kids who are straight and conservative.
Krista, Krista says uh they're told what to send in an email.
That is correct. It's organized.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, lordy, look what's here.
This lady's on our side.
May have received by now. I've left you all with a Martin Luther King Day gift, which is um a copy of Letter from Birmingham Jail that I did not get to read until much too late in my life when I went to the notoriously woke Messiah University. It is a great reminder and I am gonna get to that in a second. Just a couple of things really stood out to me and I think have complications.
She's being sarcastic. She's trying to say that she's a conservative.
The first thing I wanted to say is I was going to make a comment um regarding the policy meeting before this and if you can take nothing away from that, I cannot hammer home the point enough that trans students are more likely to be the statistically more likely to be the victims of a violent crime than they are to be the perpetrators.
So we're supposed to just go with that? No.
Oh, my goodness.
So there were a couple spots in here and you can also use your creative intelligence to.
Yeah, Pennsylvania Article one sixty-seven.
Maybe some names regarding our community uh to the names in this document.
They don't get special privileges in the news.
Moreover, I am cognizant of the interrelatedness of all communities and states.
And nobody's against, you know, LGBTQ kids. Nobody against them. Okay, uh you're against them shoving their agendas down our throats and them, you know, discriminating against our kids.
And endangering other kids. It's dangerous.
Yes, and and right in Cedar Cliff, I was told, if a kid says something that they consider to be homophobic or racist, they're sending some of these kids to the um gym, the um Cedar Cliff High School Administration to run laps.
This whole thing is ridiculous.
The West Shore School District can never be considered an outsider.
Guys, it's Martin Luther King.
Some have asked, why didn't you give the new administration time to act?
Taking something out of context.
I wish Martin Luther King would be hearing this. He'll shut that down in a minute.
As much as the outgoing one before it acts. We know through painful experience that freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor. It must be demanded by the oppressed.
Martin Luther King had a dream. She's giving us a nightmare.
Right, exactly.
Doctor.
Not suffered unduly from the stress of segregation.
I just see myself.
Oppressed people cannot remain oppressed forever. The urge for freedom will eventually come. But as I continue to think about the matter, I gradually gained a bit of satisfaction for being considered an extremist.
How are they not free? Can somebody explain that to me?
They are free. They want special treatment. They want special rights.
Well, that's being entitled, entitled little brats. That's something different. That got nothing to do with.
Guys, they're not free to groom children because we're standing in their way.
That would be correct.
They are free. They have the same rights all of us do.
What did she just say about Jesus Christ?
Was not Abraham Lincoln an extremist?
What'd she say about Jesus Christ?
Was not Thomas Jefferson?
Extremist.
We hold these truths to be self-evident.
Jesus Christ is an extremist. John Bunyan is an extremist. That's what she's saying.
Extremist, but what kind of extremist we will be.
Oh, no, she is.
You're the wrong kind. That's the point that we're making here.
Adios, bye-bye.
That was, that was good, good. That was Martin Luther King, guys. Let's see who we got next.
Martin Luther King is rolling in grave.
I needed a couple of months to cool down, but I'm here to say this is not political. I'm actually per sure I voted for one of you because of the value that I place on nursing ethics and believe that the compassionate, understanding and nonjudgmental care we are obligated to provide our patients would somehow translate over to the students and taxpayers. Excuse me, students and taxpayers of the district. It doesn't matter whether you're a Democrat, a Republican, Independent, Libertarian or Green Party when you were elected to office in the state of Pennsylvania. There are laws you are mandated to follow.
No, mandate isn't a law.
Feels that the laws are not being followed, a complaint to the Court of Common Pleas is the process that's in place. That's what this is. It's a complaint that says there were emails that were sent. There was discussion of phone calls on video and on record. Then four people came into a room, said they were being blindsided and five people were on the same page and that seems fishy.
Here we go, the sunshine act that they're accusing them of something they didn't do. They're innocent until proven guilty, but not with these people.
They're dredging this back up.
But that's all they got. You know what I'm saying? They would try to distort something, okay, to to get, get negative attention on the board. I mean, they shouldn't even be allowed to speak about this because this is an ongoing thing.
No, they, the president should be gabbling, should be, should be shutting this down.
I agree. She needs to gabble this. Looking to, to gabble.
What's the harm in taking the training again? I'm confident that if I asked some of you to pledge to take it voluntarily annually, that multiple people who would say yes. What's two or three hours out of your time?
Krista wants more people to speak. I agree.
And that is correct. That is correct.
We've been begging people to speak.
Records retention training annually, I lose my job.
Mariana, I think it's time we talked about that.
Childline every two years, I lose my license. Is this more about what's doing best, about what's doing best for the district? Or is this about pledges that were made to replace solicitors to a conservative growth pack? Speaking of which, if anyone is interested.
This is an organized effort. They come out in what I call cockroach, you know, um colonies.
Sorry, I'm just, I'm just visualizing a professional wrestler jumping from behind the camera and closing.
Have a good one.
Oh, we're gonna have a good one.
Leave the chair there.
Chair and the microphone, leave it there.
John Dewan?
Look at Sandra. Well, look at Sandra's foot. She's the one sitting here. She can see. She's, she's having trouble. It's, it's, she started tapping occasionally. She started tapping occasionally.
Who is this guy?
Good evening, everyone. Uh I return to the school board to uh raise, re-raise an issue that um I spoke last year on and that is student misconduct. The issue is only really affecting a very few people who live in my neighborhood and it surrounds the um problem of students parking in our neighborhood um and being disruptive, disrespectful. The, I spoke uh last year, uh had a conversation with um one of you, um Mr. Gay and uh things did improve somewhat. But it's markedly uh changed. Um some of the examples are uh student urinating on another student.
Where's this happening?
In the parking lot. That's cuz they don't have a transgender bathroom.
Adjacent to the school.
Thea Cliff?
Development specifically.
Cedar Cliff or what school?
Right here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I should have said Redland High School. Littering, uh loud music, uh revving of engines. I work from home. Uh I avoid scheduling anything uh around between two thirty and three because it is, is that disruptive if I'm on a mediation or a conference. They'll stop and, you know, say, are you, you know, living next to a Speedway or or a speed, you know, track or something like that. And we've, we've been uh in touch with the board, uh the school, Fairview Township, our state legislator. Principals, uh principal I've been in contact with in the past and and nothing seems to really be done about it.
Does he have video?
Surprise, surprise.
This is not me answering the question and soliciting.
It would be great. Yeah, that would be great if you could have video or somebody could, you know, send some videos. Cuz these people don't care. It don't affect them.
How is the school? What, what do you like the school to do? He's talking about a public issue on a public road that's just near the school, what they're exiting the school onto a public. He's talking about a public issue on a public road that's just near the school, what they're exiting the school onto a public road and they're getting to out. What would you like, want the school to do about it?
Well, it's because they don't have a transgender bathroom.
No, what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is that they make it so difficult for these kids to get parking passes on the property. So some of these kids park on the street.
That's fine. I think I've made the point, but my ask is.
On the streets, oh.
Can we actually do?
You can't do anything. You can contact the police and have them patrol.
Get them told.
Home Sac designated as permit parking holder.
There you go, permit parking.
Want to go to no parking on the street because people who live there, they park on the street. So I don't know if that's going to be successful. From what I was told when I approached them is that it's been tried to pass and it didn't, it didn't work. For whatever reason, the Fairview Township Commissioners, you know, designated. So I'd like to be able to live peacefully in my home without disruptive students. I will say, add one other thing. Recently, there was a deer carcass thrown in the area where they actually go through a person's property. And adjacent to their property in the woods was a headless carcass of a deer that was discovered. And I can't attribute that to the students. I'm just saying that those are things that never happened before. Somebody throwing a deer carcass in our neighborhood.
Yes, the school board meeting is the exact place to raise your issues.
Welcome to the clown world.
I get that this guy is frustrated and upset. I get that. He clearly. You're in the wrong place, guy. Sorry.
Just thought I would.
It is the United, the kids, whoever said that to you, your sarcastic representation was right, though. It is the United States of America.
Sandra Gonzalez?
Oh, again, nice. Round two.
Let's see what she's got.
Thank you. So I'll pick up where I left off. So when my parents were coming for a game, the signs on those restrooms were covered.
Oh, okay.
Now, I was told anybody can use those bathrooms. You don't have to identify as anything. Boys, girls can use whatever they want. So you can't keep a boy out of the girl's room. Not a transgender anything, just a boy. At the next basketball game I was at, someone forgot to put the signs up. So I was told I'd have to walk to the bathroom all the way at the end of the hall where the nadorium is and use that bathroom because those bathrooms have not yet been designated gender neutral. If I wanted to be able to use a woman's room. So that's what I had to do. I'm a taxpayer here. My children go, my grandchildren go to these schools. This is unacceptable. I can tell you this, for parents who are very protective of their children, you will find that this is the issue of the day. I understand. Listen, I have family members that identify other than the gender they were born with. And I treat them with the same love and respect as anyone else. I don't go to the bathroom with them, though. Other friends that I have that identify as something other than boy, girl, I treat with the same love and respect, but you're talking about our children and putting them in a position. Listen, when I was in seventh grade, I was in gym class and was told you had to change in front of your entire classmates and then you had to go into the showers with them. These were all girls. I took a zero in gym. Every gym class because I refuse to strip down in front of the girls that I went to school with. Let alone, I can't imagine, I can't imagine one of my little girls being told, well, you're going to change in front of them because they don't identify as a boy. They identify as something else. They are of another gender. They have other parts than you have.
Think about.
They don't feel that.
We're having this conversation. It's really happening.
This is murky. I get it. I get it that people don't want their rights infringed upon. But what about the rights of our girls that don't want to have to play against a boy because they know they're going to lose? There's just no way. Or a girl who does not want to change in front of
Episode eighty-eight.
Restroom in front of someone who has different body parts than them. Thank you.
Episode eighty-eight.
Your dispatch for the Free Press. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's never going to get put on.
It's on the Boiling Point Podcast Live. Episode eighty-eight. You want to check that episode out? We provide scientific evidence.
I just wanted to keep the people affected by the California wildfires and our thoughts and prayers. We have to be grateful for all we have in the areas we live in here. So we don't have to deal with that right now, but make sure you keep the firefighters in your prayers because they dealing with a lot of stuff out there. I just wanted to comment on the boys and the girls, boys and girls sports and boys and girls restrooms. Neither should ever be alloweded.
Can we please have quiet in the room? You can't talk when someone else is talking. I'm sorry, Mr. Graham.
They do that every time a conservative is speaking.
Mr. Graham, please proceed.
Okay. I just wanted to comment on the boys and girls sports and the boys and the girls restroom. Neither should ever be alloweded. This is a common sense issue. I have two granddaughters in Southern Lancaster County and they are still too young for school, but I can assure you that their mother and father and their grandmothers and grandfathers do not want this policy for their children. There's enough upside down in this world. No need to bring more problems to the districts. Again, we should be celebrating the children's accomplishments, especially of that first guy who spoke and not concentrating so much on this gender type things at these board meetings. What they have learned by going to all the schools. Let's get the children educated the best we can and stay out of the society issues. On another note, happening on Sundays and throughout the week on TV or online, I would encourage the school board administration and the residents to take some time and watch some of these, the series on, it's called Practical Speaking. It's about relationships and parenting. We all know it's not easy. So this series, which runs from January 12th to February 16th, may fill in some questions you may have in these challenging times of parenting and dealing with culture and society issues. And this, uh, this is practical speaking. It's part of Christian Life Assembly, CLA.
Yeah, Bill is not directing parenting classes of anybody in particular in this meeting at all.
Okay, this is about, and I just wanted to let them know, I have postcards available for anyone interested and this is all for free. I thank you for your time tonight. This has to do with parenting, which is a West Shore School District Board and Administration concern. So I thought I'd bring this up.
Waving it around.
I guess you can hand these to the, you can give them, oh, yeah.
Bill's right.
Probably can't hand them directly to anybody, Bill. They're not going to take them.
Do it anyway, Bill.
But keep waving it. Dude, you should have walked back by the table. Someone should let people know that there's a camera right there. You could have walked right back, right by, left that card right there next to the microphone and added on the camera.
They don't let you see the faces of the school board members anymore. Oh, Lord Jesus.
I do want to start. I was unable to attend the meeting last week.
She's the one that's running for school board.
For your time during School Board Director Month. I appreciate the time that you put in.
What's your shirt say?
It's a great service.
Protect public schools, I think.
Education.
Education.
This is deja vu. For the second year in a row, board leadership.
So she's going to run against Kelly.
Controversial issue that will dominate the dialogue, increase conflict in our schools and divert the attention from the real challenges that are facing our district. It's hard to ignore the sense that innocent students in an entire community are being pitted against one another over a purposely inflammatory yet highly nuanced topic.
They are pitting them against each other, the left.
Maybe it's that after careful examination, it's clear that nothing more can reasonably be trimmed from our school district.
Yeah, there's no way we can elect this woman. None of us.
In fact, the truth is that West Shore and other public schools in Pennsylvania are constitutionally underfunded and our district has been stretching a shoestring budget for far too long. People respect.
This will be Turdney's best friend.
She's probably supporting her to run.
Problem is that.
Krista, you know her. What's she like?
Speak to legislators about the $40 adequacy gap that exists for public school funding across Pennsylvania. Tell them how these resources will affect our students. Tell them how we can resolve the teacher shortage, how we can increase academic outcomes with full day kindergarten, how we can equip students with current technology and adequate.
Stop overspending.
We can't afford all day kindergarten. Stop lying.
They sure are pushing that hard, aren't they?
And we don't have the money.
No, we don't.
They need to fix an auditorium first. How about that?
And get textbooks, real ones, back in the school.
Boom, Triple H flies across the table and clotheslines are out of the chair.
And while we're at it, we need a new superintendent. I'm still not voting for her, Krista.
Sorry, Krista.
It stood up earlier because I thought that I got skipped, but I got my meetings all confused, so, and I apologize if I'm a little.
Yes. Yes, that's a problem.
For a lot of the girls, but also I would think for some of the boys are going to be affected too if this policy of gender neutral bathrooms keeps going forward. I've told you before that boys, those with XY chromosomes do not belong in girls bathrooms. They belong in girls locker rooms or in girls.
Yeah, she's, she's good.
You guys, you know, there's been, seems to be more speaking out against the bathroom and sports issue than for it so far.
The majority is against it, Jonathan. It's that the libtards make the most noise and when they don't get their way, losses.
History has shown that it does happen. There are schools all over the country that have had incidents of assaults. Of, I'm sorry, trans students going into girls bathrooms and assaulting girls. That's what I mean by the assaults.
That is correct.
We don't have the physical assaults which are bad enough, what about the emotional and psychological damage being done to the girls? There are girls right now that will not go to the bathroom because they don't want to be in there with a boy.
That's correct.
The nurses office. Would pull their kids and ask them and get that information to this district. So damages being done.
I love this lady.
These kids need to feel safe in these vulnerable areas and girls deserve to have a fair chance in the sports that they are working so hard in and not be unfairly competed against by those with an obvious biological advantage. I don't understand why we're even having this conversation.
Me neither.
Why aren't we protecting the girls? You're discriminating against them. I already said that part.
Episode eighty-eight.
Yeah, the damage that we're doing to girls is real too. And I'm sorry for those that are suffering from gender confusion. I don't know the answer to that. But I'll advocate again for putting the Bible back in schools. I know people don't like that, but.
Amen, amen.
Think about it. The Bible was removed from schools in 1980 after having been in schools from the very beginning, from like before even the founding of the country.
Take God out, something else is coming in.
Yep.
Are we any better off now after removing it?
Started in churches.
If you think we are, tell me how. Discipline and respect are off the charts issues, both in the schools and on the school buses. We have school shootings and bomb threats. How are we better without it in our schools?
We're not.
Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Common sense, common sense. Thank you.
That is the end of the public comments.
That is the end of the public comments. What comes after public comments, Mariana?
Administration tonight for carrying my water there for the first half of the meeting.
They're going to say goodbye to one of us pretty much.
Mr. Kambik for your help.
Okay.
There being no further business, I declare this meeting. Okay?
Sandra's like, yo, I'm out of here.
I don't know how to handle this one. Dr. Argus?
Wait, what's happening? Person here, we let them speak because we haven't adjourned yet.
Okay, Mrs. Sandness? Margot?
Oh, Lord.
I saw you come in and I said hello.
Oh, Jonathan, history.
Jonathan, she's on our side.
Jonathan.
Chrissy, stop it.
Isn't it? He followed me to the bathroom, dude.
Chrissy, you're not going to get invited again.
And resident of New Cumberland. I have a bunch of notes I plan to speak about, but.
I'm not entirely sure what side this.
Sometimes they just never seem to be quite right.
Is on.
My main thing to address tonight is athletics and trans people in.
I think I know what he's about to say.
I've been a mediocre athlete most of my life, but I did compete in a lot of volleyball, softball, running tournaments.
Did you compete as a man or a woman?
Tennis tournaments and I, competitive sports is very, very important to me.
As a man or a woman?
A lottery of a league or the challenge of a tournament. And to think that I'd be banned from such things is just hard to imagine. Somebody came up and says, why do we talk about this stuff? You know? Let's just forget it, but we can't.
No, no, that's not what they said.
Let's just forget it.
That's not what they said at all.
That want to compete. You can't, you can't have it both ways. Some resolution has to happen.
Yes, boys compete with boys and girls compete with girls. That is the resolution. That's the only resolution out there is.
Want to talk about.
At least he's not misquoting the founding fathers this time.
People would look at, right? Look at facts and science-based.
Episode eighty-eight.
Evidence, okay?
Of the Boiling Point Podcast.
I know I've been.
Will give you all of the facts.
On medication or I've had my surgery.
Evidence that you need on this topic. So tune into episode eighty-eight.
Oh, something's wrong with his testosterone.
And check that out and you'll get all of the facts that you can handle in that.
That explains it, Chrissy.
You don't have to like it. You don't have to like it, but the facts are in that episode.
Okay.
Did he say he didn't have testosterone?
No, no, he didn't. Yeah.
I'm hearing this.
After his treatment.
I can't get a trans volleyball team together.
For the bathrooms or against it?
It's just not.
Then you should, if you can't get a trans volleyball team together, then you should compete as a man or a woman, whichever one you actually are, based on your chromosome count, not on what you identify with.
That's not to say that anybody can just declare that they should be in women's sports.
That's exactly what you're advocating.
Absolutely think that. I don't think.
He's confused.
He is so confused.
Those hormones have, have, but yeah.
We can't have that, you can't.
Let's all say a prayer for him.
I'm not saying that all men can compete against women. Yes, that's exactly what you're saying by saying, all you have to do is say, I want to compete against women. Who is, who is the arbitrator of that? If you're saying not everybody gets to do it, then who is the arbitrator? Who decides who is actually a trans person and who is not a trans person?
All these people are being done all over the country and this is happening.
Is there any argument that people are more trans than other people? Or you're not trans enough to be trans, to be, to compete against the opposite sex or, you know what I mean? What does that mean?
He was on the news.
Well, that's all the, they don't, that's who they have on the news, is people like this guy.
From women, in my face, many a times, they can whack the ball almost as well as the men.
No, they can't.
Co-ed volleyball. What happens here? We have men hitting against women.
No, you didn't.
Are you serious right now?
Someone, there's.
Give this guy a mercy.
I need to get him a sandwich.
Gavel off. Save this man's life right now.
Playing with a trans person.
Is he for it or against it?
Okay.
They don't even know, Chrissy.
These four minutes are off.
Man.
Give him a sandwich.
Going to personal privilege.
Sure.
Just the policy issue that was discussed earlier in the policy committee would not ban anyone from any teams and sports sports. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's exactly right. It would make boys compete against boys and girls compete against girls. It doesn't exclude anybody. Pull your heads out of your asses.
I declare this meeting adjourned.
Close it fast. Close that thing fast, girl.
He did that quick.
Say that last week because the Penn State game was important.
She did that. She did that quick. All right, we're back.
I told you the concert was going to come out, remember, guys?
We had to close that. Yeah, she closed that window quick. She's like, okay, we're adjourned. Get out. Get out is what we're saying to you. Get out is what we're saying to you. Okay, so listen, in regards to the policy meeting that was earlier, Denise is going to help me, we're going to do a little episode on that. We're going to talk on Saturday to plan it out and figure out when to do it, hopefully by early next weekend. We lost Chrissy, but that's okay. Thank you for joining us, Chrissy. And any other parents who want to.
We're going to talk on Saturday, as you said.
Yeah, Saturday. I'll call you Saturday. We're going to plan that episode out.
Okay.
And then, of course, whenever the next school board meeting is, we'll see if we can do some kind of coverage again on, on these meetings. Maybe do another live watch along, depending on who's going to the meeting and who's not going to the meeting. Krista, get another comment and yes, Krista, tune into episode eighty-eight. I promise you, you're going to enjoy that episode. So that's, that's going to give you all of the evidence and facts that anybody needs to argue. Uh, I promise you, it's, you're going to enjoy that episode. So that's, that's going to give you all of the evidence and facts that anybody needs to argue this. All you have to do is go watch that episode. And then you can tell anybody, you can actually list them legitimate look, facts that someone can else can look up. So go watch that episode. And that's all the argument you'll need against it. Um, so yeah, we're going to have, we are going to break down the, uh, policy meeting and that's a big, what was a big part of the policy meeting was, was men competing against women and changing in their locker room. Boys, boys competing against
Those universal bathroom.
Changing in locker rooms and universal bathrooms. So we are going to break down that meeting. That'll be probably early next week or, or maybe middle of next week when we actually release the episode.
All right, the next meeting is February twelfth.
Denise, I have a question. I believe it was in the policy meeting that they were discussing, what is this family engagement title one thing that they were talking about?
I have to look into that because, um, I haven't, um, I'm not familiar with that myself, so.
It sounded like they were trying to force the parents to come to whatever meetings they want to have and discussions they want with the kids and whatever, you know, the school feels is the best for the kids. And it's like, they don't want to give the parents a, um, how can I say? They want to dictate to the parents, but, but how I understood it, they want to dictate to the parents what's best for their own kids.
And that's probably accurate considering what we know now, what's already in place. I just need to look under title one and see exactly. I'll investigate it and, um, report back to you guys because I, thanks for that reminder. Write that down.
I did tell everybody before that, uh, one of the things you were going to be doing Denise is we're going to be putting on that series about the Pennsylvania state constitution and, and then the United States, uh, the federal constitution as well. After that, uh, we hope to release that completely sometime in March is when we hope to release that. So make sure you look for that. And of course, we're, uh, since next one's not till February now, the next meeting, we
February thirteenth, I'm sorry. It's like a, it's a committee meeting on the twelfth, uh, first.
And then the twelfth, so we'll, I don't know, I Wednesdays are hard for me to do. That is my, like, that's my one personal day a week is, is Wednesday. So I don't know if we'll be able to do anything for the policy.
So on Thursday, the thirteenth, um,
But the school board meeting on the thirteenth, yeah, we're going to try and do, we'll try and do another live watch along, depending on who's going to go and who's not going to go and who's, you know, if someone can come on the episode or be at the meeting.
I'm probably going to have to go.
Yeah.
I have documents.
I can still do, I can still, we can still do the live watch along, which we might be still be doing, even if, even if Mariana and Denise can't make it, but I likely won't be providing to you the same exact commentary that Mariana and Denise, you know, were, were providing with you through, through most of that meeting because I don't, you know, I don't know.
Hey, we can serve and leave. Yeah, we don't have to stay, you know?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's fine. Whatever you guys
What's that for the next meeting?
You guys being at the meetings is obviously more important. So, yeah, but Mariana
See how it goes.
Yeah, the next meeting, whatever you guys Yeah, we're going to do the live watch along. We'll have the, we'll have Mariana and Denise on. If they don't go to the meeting, if they do, then we'll, we'll cover the meeting and then have them on afterwards. Kind of like what I was planning to do tonight and then Mariana and Denise wanted to get on and actually do the live watch along. So we did that instead. Um, do you guys want to talk about anything else before we get ready to close out ourselves?
Well, I, I do, you know, this thing with the transgender. Yeah, this thing with the transgender has really, you know, grown different heads in different departments of the schools and departments in the West Shore School District. And I'll tell you, um, Cedar Cliff High School has a drama team and this year they're doing the, um, Play, Let's Miss or Ob. Now I, you know, being a New Yorker, okay, I, I was in Broadway all the time seeing plays. I'm a reader. I, I, I love when it comes to art, to the arts. Explain to me what Let's Miss or Ob's have to do with anything gay. And this is what I mean. We have a crew director that last year when they did The Little Mermaid, the kids had the same situation that, um, she forces the kids to give her their pronouns, even if the child doesn't want to, they're strong armed, okay? Um, she came in, I think it was yesterday, they had a rehearsal with the crew with a shirt that says, leave those trans kids alone, you freaks. This is an administrative staff member with a shirt on and that should go against, um, school policy dress code. It should. Okay, that's a way of bullying. That's a way of intimidating. That's a way of indoctrinating because they're trying to push that this is normal. Okay. And so the kids, you know, um, that are working on this play, especially the crew that's in the back are being exposed to this. Last year when they did Little Mermaid, um, when the kids, um, they wanted the pronouns in the program. I guess they didn't have time to put it in the program. Okay. What she did was that she took the kids, she put some duct tape, you know, the silver duct tape behind them, wrote their pronouns behind it, made the kids stand on the stage, turn their backs to the people to show their pronouns. Okay, this is how far this has gone. Okay. In every, in every department, in every school, in every crack and crevice of the West Shore School District, our kids are facing this every day. Now, thank God that my kids, they know God, they stand firm and they believe this doesn't shake them. But when you have other children, okay, who are weak minded, who don't have strong convictions, okay, we, this is when the confusion starts. So they're being, you know, spoon fed this every day. So I say this to tell the parents, if you think this is not happening in your school, if you think this is not happening in the West Shore, walk into the school, give them a surprise, start talking to the kids and you will find out the opposite. And this is why it is so essential that we have the conservative voices come out to these meetings. I understand that they're long. I understand that they're exhausted. Listen, I run out of work to go to these meetings. I don't get to eat till eleven o'clock at night, half of the time. Okay. Because as you can see, Jonathan, how they drag it out. Okay. But yet and still with that, we need you guys to come out and use your voices because if we're going to have a chance to turn anything, change anything and shed light, your voice matters. I understand that they have silenced us in the past, but we cannot let them win. We have to keep speaking the truth. We gotta be the light of the world. We gotta be the soul of the earth. Because we Christians have become quiet. We Christians have become silent. The thought, we stop, we stop being the sort of the earth. We're seeing the corruption that we're seeing, the decay that we're seeing. And now it's affecting our kids. So, yeah, um, West Shore School District has a lot of issues. Um, violence, bullying, okay? Uh, kids against, uh, kids, teachers against kids, teachers against parents. This transgender thing is out of control. Parents, it's time to use your voice. And if you feel called to run for office, contact one of us. We will help you. We need strong people with backbones of steel and men, we need you. We need more men to come out. Because what they're seeing is the voice of the woman. Not that there's anything wrong with that, but the voice of the man, the presence of the man, the presence of the father sometimes can do more. Okay, the voice of the man than the voice of a woman. We need the presence of our Papa Bears to come out. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Denise, I think had some technical issues. We lost her out of the, uh, out of the studio here. She wanted to say something. I was hoping that she would be able to jump back in before Mariana was done, but it doesn't look like she is going to be able to jump back in and I'm not going to vamp. We've been going for two hours and eighteen minutes and I'm ready to wrap this out. I'm actually glad the school board meeting wasn't one of the longer ones that you guys have talked about. Yeah, they run longer if you can believe that. Um, so stay tuned to the boiling point podcast. We're going to be, uh, bringing you a lot more stuff. We have a lot of shows coming up, new shows coming up, plus our coverage of the West Shore School District. Plus with, uh, President Trump coming back in office, we will likely be doing, um, some more episodes on what's happening nationally. Uh, we were talking about maybe doing a live watch along for the inaugural address, but I don't know if we'll be able to pull that off. Um, but stay tuned because we do have a lot of episodes coming up, a lot of coverage coming up, a lot of new shows coming here in twenty twenty-five. Check out the storefront bonfire.com slash store slash the boiling point podcast. Pick up the new First Amendment T-shirt or, uh, sweatshirt. Pick up the new design apparel and, uh, share it out. Share this episode out. Hit that reaction button. Hit that thumbs up button. Hit that heart button and, uh, share it out. Help us reach more people. Until next time for Mariana Reed, I am your host JD. And that's the end.